I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, September 5th, 2023. Please stand before the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance is through the flag of the United States of America. It is through the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Erickson, will you take role?
Mayor LaKind.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Here.
Councilmember Romanella.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Here.
Councilmember Chronic.
Here.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Okay, well, is it right now? Here he is.
We'll give him two seconds.
A warm.
Thank you.
Warm round of applause for Councilmember Marco Fiorito. Yes, do.
I mean, I know he's Air Force, but I'd say put him in the main event.
Okay, first up disclosures of conflict of interest, Mr. Cole.
Yes.
Just one correction. Yeah, there is no disclosure. I have no problem with A.
I make a motion to accept the disclosure and exclude Mayor LaKind from 11B and 12A. Second.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion passes six to zero. Next up, we have an agenda and a consent agenda. We'd like to, we're going to continue. Item 7A, Resolution 592023 to October 16th. Second. Okay, so you looked at the PUD, we're going to do one PUD, and then everything else is cleared. Okay, October 2nd, that's, okay. We're going to continue that, and that's modified. Are there any other modifications to the agenda? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the modification.
I saw move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson.
Okay, sorry, who seconded that?
I did.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mayor Pro Tem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Mayor LaKind.
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're gonna have to throw those ballots out and start over again because Chronic double voted.
Okay, that's what the look was for. Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and do we have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as modified. Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Erickson.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Mayor LaKind.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, those motions pass seven to zero. Next up, oaths of office, Chief Reagan. Reagan, sorry. Well, just like, look at that, just like that, you say your name and.
You said it right.
All right, all right.
They waited, so thank you all. Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to introduce our three newest officers and offer our extended oath of office to them. You don't want us to stand up? We'll get that going. Like I said, I'm nice, so I'm not going to make you try to remember it. You're Morgan Chapman. Make sure you say your name when we get to that part.
So, before we have the families come up and add these, you guys could just give a quick rundown of who you are and where you're from. Uh, Warren Chavon, originally from here, Colorado Springs. Went to college at Colorado State University in Grand Junction, bachelor's in criminal justice, came back. Sent myself through Self-Too Post Academy, makes me community college at the time, 2017, and then went to work in Oak County. In fall of, or correction, spring of 2018, at this point around here, from two, three, and line up this row.
Uh, can Morgan stand with the left?
And just to be clear, this is the blood badge, right? We pinned, no? Okay, all right.
They have guns on you.
All right, off to the great challenge.
Hello, my name is William Rios.
Yeah.
Um, I live between Jersey, probably, oh, and, well, that Boston area. Been in Colorado since mid 2000s, sort of like corrections and reversions, nine years ago. And compared it to a lot of person do. Muswell Academy in 2019, and then it comes in. And I'm here, come from public, all the county shows like this.
Officer Willie Rios. Good evening. Uh, my name is Paul Berry, I'm born and raised in West Texas, joined the Army. Joined the Army, uh, right after high school, did 30 years in military. And, uh, once I got out of the military, I went straight to work for the Health and Public Health Service Office. Worked there for approximately four years in their attention facility, and then Neil came over here. Lived in Colorado about eight years. Loved it ever since I moved here. Awesome. Paul's family.
As long as it's the Ford gray truck and not the Ram gray truck.
Kick the right gray truck.
Yeah. All right, next up. You know, I don't even know how he got to this point. I mean, I know we loved you, but not $800,000 loved you. All right, next up, we have long overdue, but. Promoting Tina Erickson to officially our town clerk and Erica.
Ready, so, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, I have the honor and privilege tonight to swear in Ms. Tina Erickson, if you'll just repeat after me. I, Tina Erickson.
I, Tina Erickson.
Raise your right hand. I haven't done this in a minute, sorry. I, Tina Erickson.
I, Tina Erickson.
Affirm that I will support the United States Constitution, the Colorado Constitution, and the Town of Monument Charter and ordinances. We did practice that.
Affirm that I will support the United States Constitution, the Colorado Constitution, and the Town of Monument Charter and ordinances.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of the town clerk.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of town clerk.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Um, so I started at the Town of Monument. Um, I started at the Town of Monument in 2017, working as the front desk admin. Um, I then was a deputy clerk for the last three years. And here we are.
You passed what sort of position you get through?
Um, I passed my CMCA, which is Colorado Municipal Clerks Association.
Typically, it takes how long to do that?
Three years.
And you did it.
Um. Close. Well, it was like a week shy of three years.
But we are very happy that Tina is our new town clerk. And that after the last one, we did not seek another one outside. So, good job, Tina, great job. All right, now we'll get to the, the other fun stuff. Ordinance number 182023 in ordinance amending table 1 dot 1 in section 1801221. Uh, Mr. Liligren.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. We need just one second to pull up the correct presentation. All right, this is for ordinance 182023 in ordinance amending table 1.1 in section 1801220, review process in the Monument Municipal Code. Background of the Town of Monument seeks to revise the contradictory message conveyed by chapter 18, review process, section 1801220, table 1.1, review procedures chart in the Monument Municipal Code. Uh, their request is to edit table 1.1, review procedures chart, to eliminate confusion created when comparing the table to sections 1802260B3C. Current code contradicts itself regarding final plots. Currently in the 2023 code, section 1801220, review process, table 1.1, review procedures chart, you'll see that for approval, there are Xs in the column for planning commission and for board of trustees. Xs are, by the legend, considered meeting or action required, but if you look in code, those are actually hearing items for public hearing. So, section 180260B3C, final plot procedure, after reviewing the planning commission recommendation and conducting a public hearing on the application, the board of trustees will approve. Approve with conditions or deny the final plat, depending on whether it meets the review and approval criteria. That's the contradiction. The Town of Monument seeks to remove the contradictory message conveyed by section 1801220, table 1.1, review procedures chart in the Monument Municipal Code. Currently, this table states that a final plat must be reviewed at a required planning commission and town council meeting or action, which have different requirements than a public hearing. However, in section 1802260B3C of the Monument Municipal Code, regarding final plat procedures, final plots require a public hearing before the planning commission and town council. In processing final plat applications, staff has navigated this discrepancy and leaned into requiring public hearings. These contradictions can be questioned by developers and complicate the review process. This revision would ease staff's burden and clarify review processes. Staff's finding is the revision of section 1801220, review process table 1.1, review procedures chart of the Monument Municipal Code, to be the most appropriate method for providing clarity in the final plat review process. On table 1.1, the approval section would be revised to show public hearings before planning commission and town council as a requirement for final plat applications. Proposed update, revised table 1.1, strike three to be removed, underline to be added. On August 9th, this was presented to the planning commission. Mission, Commissioner Zernico made a motion to approve the revision of section 261236060. Commissioner Collins seconded the motion. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the ordinance requesting a revision to section 1801220, table 1.1, review procedures chart in the Monument Municipal Code, passed 7-0 in favor. Questions?
Questions from council?
Just, just a question regarding, so, everything in the packet says 220, so it sounds like it's correct. The agenda says 221, that's not an issue, correct? I just want to confirm, it's just a typo. Everything else in the packet, the ordinance and everything is 220, 1801220, but in the agenda it says 221, that shouldn't be an issue, right? Or do we need to amend the agenda? That shouldn't matter, right? What's the?
I think as long as in the, no, your motion makes like 212.
220, okay. Right, yeah, so it, it looks like it's just a typo on the agenda only and nowhere else.
It should say, it should be right on the ordinance.
It, it is, yeah, everything else is correct, okay.
Yep.
Good catch.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
I'll make a motion to approve, oh, go ahead.
All right. Uh, this is a public hearing item, so if there is anybody here in the public that would like to speak for or against this motion, welcome you front and center. Really? About this motion? It's about this motion, huh? Okay.
Joel Lustby, um, just noticed that it refers to board of trustees. Are we still gonna?
That's, that's the old.
Is that gonna be changed?
It.
As long as you're changing this.
The slide, in this, Mr. Liligren, the slide reflected in the new context, planning commission and town council, did it not?
It still refer, refers to as BOT and board of trustees, and the reason for that is that we could go ahead and make that change tonight. However, as our code currently states, charter has town council listed all over it. But in the code, that has not been fully updated yet, all references are still to a board of trustees. And so it creates a conundrum of whether or not we would make that change, and that's why staff didn't include that in this ordinance.
Yeah, we're going through the entire code, Bob's doing this right now, going through the entire code and finding where those changes need to be made, and we're gonna make those.
Okay, thank you.
So, are you for or against this?
I'm for it.
Okay, so just to, just to clarify, at some point, we're gonna get a, a change. Motion, whatever, ordinance that changes all BOT to town council.
Yeah, what I, what I'm anticipating currently is bringing each chapter of your municipal code to you in a.
Okay.
Repeal and readopt.
Okay.
To, you know, a chapter at a time, so we don't get too long.
Yeah, got it.
But making all the changes necessary under the new charter, which will include all those references.
Okay, so right now, we're changing the, um, significant pieces that affect. Uh, staff, um, day-to-day operations, and then we'll, okay.
And, and these are really just from identified ambiguities and conflicts, these are not necessarily related to the charter.
Sure. Thank you.
Since we're, anybody in the public, anybody else in the public that would like to speak for or against? Okay, um, Will, do we have anybody online? That would like to speak for or against? Anybody have their hand raised? Okay. Then we will close the public hearing item and bring it back to the council for further discussion or emotion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 182023 in ordinance amending table 1.1 in section 180120, 220, review process in the Monument Municipal Code. Second.
A motion and a second. Ms. Erickson.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
Mayor LaKind.
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes 7-0. Uh, Mr. Liligren, you got the next one, ordinance number 19 dash 2023.
Thank you, Mayor LaKind. The following is an ordinance 192023, it's an ordinance amending section 1236060 of the Monument Municipal Code. July 2021, land development code update consolidated all land use regulations into one document for ease of reference, including zoning, subdivision, sign, and other related code provisions. As staff and applicants have worked with the code, noticeable issues have been identified, this is one of several updates that staff anticipates. The existing code in 1236060, sign and awning requirements, I won't read the whole thing for you, but it basically speaks to, uh, signs or awnings in projecting into the public right-of-way, and it points to chapter 1756, which does not exist any longer. Uh, the chapter is now in the current title 18. And so, currently, the section 1236060 references the no-longer-existing chapter 1756, that was removed in 2021, and the land development code was updated to consolidate all zoning and land use regulations. Chapter 1806 addresses the signs in the current land development code. This inconsistent language complicates review processes and places the responsibility of interpretation on staff. Revising these sections will allow staff to review sign plans and approve permits more effectively. Uh, town find, or staff findings that are revisioned to the section 1236060, the Monument Municipal Code, to be the most efficient method of providing clarity regarding signed code by removing the reference to chapter 17. Staff will be able to review sign plans and approve permits more effectively. The proposed update, striking through those to be removed, underlining those to be added, section 1236060, sign and awning requirements, I'll read this for the record. Signs or awnings in or projecting into the public right-of-way or public easement shall require a revocable permit or lease in addition to any requirements pursuant to the town's sign code contained in chapter 1806. Or any subsequent sign code or modification thereof. A revocable permit or lease may be rejected in the sole discretion of the town, even if the applicable application complies with sign code criteria. If such application presents a hazard of any type, or does not generally conform to the architectural details of the building, or is aesthetically discordant when considered as a whole with the building or area where such sign or awning is to be constructed. Issuance of a revocable permit or le, or lease is entirely discretionary within the town. The motion was, this was presented to planning commission, Commissioner Collins made a motion to approve the revision of section 1236060. Commissioner Zernico seconded the motion. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the ordinance requesting a revision to section 1236060 of the Monument Municipal Code. The motion passed 7-0. Any questions?
Any questions from the council? Okay, this too is a public hearing item. Is there anybody other than Joel that would like to make a motion? Comment for or against this this mo this ordinance? Oh, Joel, you're welcome to to. No. You know, he's my neighbor, and I'm sure he's going to do something to my property one day. Anybody online, Will?
No, ma'am.
Okay, if then we'll close public hearing, bring it back to the council for further comment or motion.
I move that we approve ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty three, an ordinance amending section twelve dot thirty six dot zero eight zero of the Monument Municipal Code.
Zero six zero. Zero six zero.
What did I say?
Eight zero.
Oh, well, I was wrong. Well, there's that.
We'll we'll go with the.
Sorry.
We'll go with the section that Jeff picked.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Furito?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Mary La Kind?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes seven to zero. Next up, ordinance number twenty dash twenty twenty three, an ordinance approving a real property exchange with Porchlight Properties. Mr. Cole?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Bob Cole, Town Attorney. This ordinance is to facilitate a land exchange to benefit your water supply system. It involves a narrow strip of land that is just west of Beacon Light Road and just south of Second Street, adjacent to lots ten through sixteen, addition number one subdivision. In the historic past, you operated a groundwater well on this property, but the well had to be re-drilled, and it was re-drilled, it was drilled on the adjacent lot eleven with the property owner's consent and pursuant to an easement. But now we're at a position where we'd like to effect a land exchange, so your your well is on land owned by the town. And then in exchange, conveying a portion of that narrow strip back to the the owner of lot eleven. The owner is Porchlight Properties LLC. And this transaction was actually approved back in twenty twenty one, but then in preparing for the property transaction and the closing, it was discovered that there was not clear title to this narrow strip of land in the town, and so we recently engaged special counsel. They filed a quiet title action to prove up the town's title to that parcel. And that action has been filed, it's gone through the notice process around September eighteenth, if no one has entered an appearance in that action claiming title, and we don't really expect there will be. Then we'll apply to the court and have an order of quiet title. Finding that the town's title to that that property is good. At that point, if you approve this ordinance tonight, then we'll go into a property transaction mode that will also involve a replating, because we need to create the parcel that the well is on, that's referred to as as lot A in the documents. And then we need to divide that strip that we're quieting quieting title to really into kind of three sections. There's there's one section that overlaps with Second Street that would be dedicated to the town for the purposes of Second Street. Then a piece of that going down to, I think, the northern border of Lot eleven that the town will retain, and then a piece from there south that would be conveyed to Porchlight Properties in order to as part of this exchange in exchange for Porchlight conveying lot A. So this ordinance approves two separate purchase and sale contracts for real estate. One of them is the transaction where lot A will be transferred from Porchlight Properties to the town. The other contract is where the town will transfer a portion of this narrow strip to Porchlight. They both are contingent on on each other happening at the same simultaneous closing. There'll be easements also granted across the parcel that is being granted to Porchlight to allow the town to get to the well site and also for existing water lines that are that are in that strip of land. The and and again, both of those transactions that simultaneous closing will be dependent upon the town through proper process approving a replating to create these lots. This ordinance and these agreements do not do not say that the town is approving that replating at this point, you can only do that through the proper process. It doesn't guarantee that that'll happen. It just says that we will file applications and and work them through the process. If the replating happens, then we proceed to closing and and affect the land exchange. Now, I had passed to you a redlined document, and it proposes two revisions to the contract to buy and sell from the town to Porchlight. And these go to paragraphs four B and E. So if you're favorable to adopting this ordinance, I would recommend that you adopt it, approve it with these revisions to that contract. And just to explain these quickly, and I'll read some of the language. Four B, the revisions there are to help clarify that that the plat that's attached to the contract is an old draft. This is the draft that was done in twenty twenty one, it was a working draft, it never got finalized. So it does depict the parcels correctly, but a lot of the language has to be cleaned up and revised and brought up to date. But it it is really attached for purposes of identifying the property. But what this language says is that plat, you know, we're anticipating submitting a new replat substantially the same as that, but that it's going to need need those revisions. That language is also at the end of paragraph four E, the the proposed revision, it says buyer and seller recognize that the draft replat was prepared in twenty twenty one without being finalized, and though it properly depicts the parcels that are subject to this contract and the contract to buy and sell real estate Porchlight to the town, numerous updates and revisions, especially to plat notes and other texts, will be necessary and may be required for final approval. So we're not saying this is the final plat that has to be approved, it's just got to look sort of like this. And then the other the other purpose of these revisions is really contained in the middle of paragraph B. And in talking to the principal for Porchlight Properties, he just wanted some assurance that the town would not use its easement right as kind of a staging area for construction equipment, construction supplies. And so this language that that we agreed to add is really to clarify, it's only for purposes of maintaining and constructing. And when when we go in for that kind of operation, we do it quickly, and then we get get the equipment and the supplies out of there. So I'll just read that sentence to you, so we've got it on the record. It says, "The replat shall include plat notes defining the easements and shall obligate seller anytime the easements are used for active work to proceed diligently and completely work as quickly as possible to minimize the time of entry within the easements, and shall allow seller to store only that equipment and materials within the easement as necessary for work within the easement area. And seller shall remove all equipment and materials promptly upon completion of such work." So some some minor revisions, but we'd like to have those incorporated in any motion to approve, if you're so inclined to approve. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cole. Any questions from the council on this item?
I have a couple. So the southernmost part of this goes across the Santa Fe Trail. How does that affect the Santa Fe Trail?
If if there is an easement already there for the trail, then we'll we'll have that noted on the plat, and it'll it should be depicted on this plat that comes before you. If there isn't an easement that's been provided previously for that trail, then that would be an appropriate thing to put on the plat and require as a condition of approval, I would I would believe.
Okay, yeah, I would like to to see that happen, then. And just as a matter of clarification, because this is before my time here, and I realize that that was approved a couple of years ago, but just to get this on the record, because I asked Mr. Foreman a few questions, and I'd just like to make sure that we're that the town realizes this as well, because this was a concern of mine as far as affecting any right of way that we would need for Old Denver to be expanded and or sidewalks. So if you could just put that on the record, Mr. Foreman, so.
Yeah, I think I'll explain to the council what you're talking about a little bit further. Joe Rivera was the attorney working on this previously when he resigned and turned, we went with Bob. He turned this case over to Bob, and Bob started working on this. So it had been presented to the Board of Trustees previously to transfer ownership from the town of Monument to the current to the future owner to create a contiguous lot. Conexus is presented, I presented this to y'all last week, interim improvements to Beacon Light Road based on their development of Conexus. The designs for the widening of Beacon Light Road, they will, as development occurs, work with the town and the developer to the east to create the further widening of the Beacon Light Road, which would include sidewalks on both sides of Beacon Light Road.
Okay, so and just to get, just to be clear, because again, this was my, one of my concerns. We have plenty of right of way left over with with doing this land exchange, correct?
So we'll we'll have plenty of right of way in the future when we work with the developer of the property to the east. All of the widening of Beacon Light Road will go to the east, just like any developer that comes in. We require them to participate in the widening of roads. That developer will participate in the widening of the road.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions from the council?
Yes, real quick, two questions. One, access to the lot, is that going to occur from the existing road that that exists to get, this is near Arlene's Beans, I I take it, right?
It is.
So so that turn in, is that going to be the access to the lot to the to the south? The this the slot that we're talking about?
So if you look at page forty eight of your packet.
Okay.
And you see tract or lot one?
Yep.
And you see how it it it's northern boundary has that that hundred twenty foot dimension, and then it actually extends over the thirty two feet ninety eight or thirty two point nine eight feet?
Yes, yes.
From that line all the way down to the southern boundary of track day that's extended to the east. You see that?
Yep.
It's it's currently labeled access and maintenance easement.
Yes.
That whole area is going to be access, maintenance, and public utility easement.
Okay.
And so you'll have access through the the entire area. That current access that you're talking about is just the little kind of rhomboid, if I remember the right word.
It was the term we used.
That that is labeled.
Rhomboid.
Rhombus, rhombus, the rhombus shaped part.
Yep.
Parcel that's labeled Porchlight Diversity Access Easement.
Correct.
That's the current.
Road, yeah, okay.
So so we'll actually be able to access it through a larger area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Question is, yes.
What's answer?
Answer is yes.
Yeah, okay, no, that's good. I I wasn't. The the extra detail helps me understand that we're not going to need a second access point, we're going to use the existing, but okay. The one thing on the, I'm glad we were adding the the caveat of we're going to bring in the equipment, use it, and get it out as as fast as we can. Question on on this inclusion, do do we need to specify for the lot owner that if there's delays, we'll work with them to remove, for example, supply chain, right? We're waiting for the part, it takes six months. Technically, we're we're not supposed to remove the equipment until we're done, but we're waiting six months for the piece or the part or what have you. Do we need to put a a a second caveat that says that takes into consideration unforeseen delays that we're we'll just remove it and then bring it, i is that necessary or that's on the honor system? I don't want to overcomplicate, but I also want to give the the owner peace of mind that it's not going to sit there for seven months while we wait for the part.
Yeah, right. As long as what you're not attempting to accomplish is leaving the equipment there while you wait for seven months.
Okay.
I I don't think we need to add it, this this language, the the owner approved.
Okay.
If we wanted to be kind of more restrictive as to the town's rights and uses, we could also deal with that when we're writing the plat notes. But if you're trying to look out for the owner, he was comfortable with this.
Okay.
So I'd leave that alone.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Okay. No other questions from the council, we will move on, this is a public hearing item. If there's anybody here at Town Hall that would like to speak for or against this ordinance, please come up. Okay, Will, do we have anybody online?
No, mayor.
Okay. Seeing no one wants to speak to this in person or online, we will bring it back to the council for further comment or emotion.
I'll move to approve ordinance number twenty 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 three, an ordinance approving a real property exchange with Porchlight Properties with the revisions as discussed for B and E with new language.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Erickson?
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes, with with the caveat that we deal with the Santa Fe Trail easement.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Furito?
Yes.
Mary La Kind?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes seven to zero, and last but not least, ordinance number twenty one dash twenty twenty three, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property described as lot two block one Buttonwood Park subdivision number two. Mr. Foreman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Does anybody know where lot two block one Buttonwood Park subdivision number two is? Mayor does, Steve does. It is right outside this window, so it's two lot, two lots over, not the first lot, but the second lot. For several years, we've been trying to negotiate with both of these property owners to be able to acquire land in order for us to make plans for the future for the town of Monument. The first owner of the lot just directly next to us has offered us a opportunity to purchase that for an extremely expensive amount of money, and I told him that we weren't interested in that. Now, this lot, lot two, the next lot over, is a very reasonable offer, and we have a letter and intent in front of us. A lot of times, town managers don't take letter intents to the council, but I feel like with this council and with other council I've met with that I should do that. And so I have brought you the letter intent to purchase this property, doesn't tie us into anything, it just, you know, is a period of let's take a look at it, let's review it, let's see if it's worth the town of Monument purchasing. And so I would like to present to you that opportunity for you to give me the opportunity to sit down with the owners and negotiate whether or not we would like to purchase this property, if that is your intent. Be willing to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, any questions from members of the council?
I'll jump in.
I figured you would.
Well. So what we would be agreeing to tonight is just the the letter of intent to look further, this would not go to contract.
No, we it, we would do a letter intent, we'd look at it, I'd bring it back to you if we felt like it was a good idea and everything, everything works out well with the contract and stuff like that, then we would go to contract after you approved that.
Okay, so. Okay, so would, would these real estate transactions be typically discussed in executive session for something like this, or?
They definitely could be. That is an opportunity, real estate transactions and negotiations can be done in executive session.
Okay, and the purpose of this property would be for?
For a future expansion of either Town Hall, for a park, just for us to be able to have that for future needs and use. It's been a direction from previous councils and of Florida trustees to be able to purchase these if we can. The one in the middle is probably going to be the most difficult. I think the strategy would be to tie up both ends, and we would be able to put more pressure on the current owner of the one in the middle.
Okay, and that, and that lot is currently zoned commercial, correct?
Yes. And I, I think if you look, there's a picture somewhere around Town Hall that shows three different buildings going across here with parking lots, and, and just to make you aware, currently, we don't own the west side of our parking lot, we lease that from the property owner next to us.
And so to get access to that, there's currently an easement through that middle lot?
That is what we are researching and looking at, there used to be an easement there. There appears to be paperwork that we, they could have removed that easement back in the nineties, and so we're, we're taking a look at that right now. But we can put that easement back on there too.
Okay, so again, this wouldn't commit us to anything more other than further studies.
Exactly.
And we, and we could do kind of our own due diligence on that as well, correct?
Exactly, so if we come back, if I come back to you and say, I don't think this is a great deal, no harm done, no foul. If I think, if we do think it is a great deal, and y'all want to move forward, then we can move forward with a contract. Just like, and I know some of you aren't here, but Mayor and Jim were here when we did two fifty-nine Beacon Light, when we bought that property, and it's same realtor, matter of fact, that we bought that property from is the same realtor that we're buying, that we're using to do this transaction.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification.
You bet.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, public hearing item, anybody in the public would like to make comment for or against this? You sure? Okay, anybody online?
No, Mayor.
Okay, then if there's no, oh, Erica? You had your hand up. Hi, high bid? Okay, then we will bring it back for any comment or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty, twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property described as lot two, block one, Buttonwood Park subdivision number two, County of El Paso, State of Colorado.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Erickson.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Mayor La Kind.
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. That motion passes seven to zero. We'll move on to public comment. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments, and comments will be limited to three minutes. We have anybody here in public that would like to make comment on something that we've not discussed already tonight? Yes, ma'am, come on down.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, and council members. My name's Jamie Halligan, I'm the Director of Volunteer Events and Community Engagement. I have an informational update, I'd love to pass out some handouts that pertain to my brief update, if that's okay? Okay.
Sure.
Should I start with Tina? How many of you guys have heard of Silver Key before? All right, very good, just want to talk to my audience. Silver Key is a nonprofit that started over fifty-three years ago. We actually have a location off of Jefferson Street in the Monument Tri-Lakes area. And so I wanted to inform you guys of some initiatives and some programs that we have that provide services for seniors in the local community here in Monument and Tri-Lakes. So in particular, this flyer here that shows volunteers needed, this is just information that we have a, a robust transportation program. We provide transportation for seniors all across the Pike Peak region, but we're really ramping up in the Monument Tri-Lakes area. And then we also have a handyman program that we're launching, in particular for grab bars, porch repairs, minor repairs for the local citizens. So this is something really exciting that we're taking on the transportation for the Silver Key organization. We provide over a hundred rides every weekday. So we just wanted to inform you guys of the support of services that we provide for both the transportation and the handyman. And then this flyer here is the companionship program. So we have seniors that are needing that social connectivity, have skilled volunteers that come into the home and provide that connection for seniors in the form of a cup of coffee, a walk around the block, just information for them, and we partner with UC Health Next Chapter. So this is something really exciting that we're doing to provide that connection, and also the peace of mind and support for families. So we just wanted you guys to be aware of what's going on. We're really doing a big push in the Monument Tri-Lakes area, and wanted you guys to have that information, and also connect a face with the name, since I'm the Director of the Volunteer Program. I plan to be up here and recruiting volunteers and reaching out to different civic groups and faith-based groups and retirees. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for letting me come in today to speak with you guys, and just wanted to see if you had any questions. All right.
Councilmember.
Hi, guys.
Councilmember Chronic, you've never heard of this organization, huh?
Yes, Councilmember Chronic, we're so honored that you're part of Silver Key, and she's on our Board of Directors, and so it's amazing to, to be here tonight and just raise that awareness. So if you're out and about, and you see us networking and connecting, you'll have that awareness of what we do. Silver Key does a breadth of services on the backside of this flyer. You can see that we have the thrift store here, right off of Palmer Lake, off of Highway one oh five. We have a robust senior health and wellness program, inclu- including the companionship program. And then we also have a Connections Cafe and various services in the senior, Silver Key Senior, Tri-Lake Senior Center, so that's in the Grace Best Center. We just wanted you guys to be aware of what's happening, and we're doing a big volunteer push, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Gee, I wonder who's next? Haley.
Mayor, councilmembers, Haley Chapin here from Tri-Lakes Cares, just wanted to take a quick moment to say thank you. Driving down Second Street, we noticed that the trees, trees, most of them, ninety-five percent of them, are the right color, they're orange. I'm wearing my orange ribbon today. September is Hunger Action Month, and we are the big fighting agency in the community, helping to make sure that no one in our community is fighting hunger alone. And so we appreciate the town's support, I just wanted to say thank you for doing that. We'll be doing some social media posts, some selfies next to the orange trees and so forth, and pointing out the town's support of the organization, so just wanted to say thank you, and appreciate the support.
Thank you.
So there's a little jumping mouse that get the other five percent.
Beautiful mouse. Do we have any other people who would like to speak, yes, ma'am?
I don't have a pen, so, Brandy Turner, I know. I actually wanted to speak on something that we've already talked about, but I think it's worth saying again. First of all, thank you to Laura Hogan for her service to our community, to our town. She is one of the hardest working people that you don't see. She has done so much, just that I know of, through the Home Rule process and the election process, that we have to give a big shout out to her. And then a big welcome to Tina, who's also amazingly hardworking, the amount of work that she does for our town, or answering questions for us and for the board. If anybody has questions, if she doesn't know the answer, she'll get you to the right person, which happened the other day. So I just wanted to say, we've already talked about it, but I want to thank both of them for their service.
Definitely, thank you, and Laura would have been here tonight, but she's playing hockey.
She's hardworking right now on the ice, hurting people.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you, Brandy.
Do not get in front of her, a- and just, and, and thank you, Brandy, for that, we really appreciate that, just to know that, you know, Laura is still the mentor for Tina, and will be helping her through this learning process, and is not leaving the town or anything like that, she's going to be here to help us through this process for a long time, so, thank you.
Great. Anybody else in person that would like to speak during public comment? No, okay, Will, do we have anybody online that would like to speak? Okay, then we will close the public comment. And we, we don't have any council authorization items that I know of, anybody have any authorization items they would like to speak of, no, okay, council comments then? Any council members have any comments they would like to make?
Yes, just real quick, I do apologize for, for my late arrival. I was doing a soccer coaching for under eleven girls soccer team, and I was changing the bathroom, so I apologize for, for being late.
Thank you for that information. Mr. Kimpel?
I just want to make sure that information is shared with all the board members, and things should be discussed during or at the council meetings before decisions are made and things are executed regarding the Glen Eagle fiasco. I just believe that if it was brought up here to the council to talk about that we could have come up with a, an avenue or a right way to approach it, instead of what came across as being somewhat hasty. It just doesn't look good that we're doing that we're, we're applying best business practices, that's all.
Okay, any other council members want to make a comment? Okay, then, Mr. Cole, would you like to take us into executive session? And for those that are here, there is the possibility that we will be coming back. Well, I will be coming back for one of the executive sessions, but there's possibility that the council will be coming back to vote on something, or not, but we will be coming back to close out the meeting, so we'll be adjourning here.
Yeah, we'll be going to another location.
Right, so members can stay here if they desire, but we are leaving, but Mr. Cole, do you want, are we, are we good with that, just? Okay, then we will pause the video and recording during the executive session and come back to it when we are done.
We do a motion, or we go into executive, correct? Okay. Okay, and we do each individual motion. Okay, so I make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two sub four sub F regarding personnel matters involving the town manager, who has been notified of the executive session, and has consented to it.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion a second, Ms. Erickson.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Mayor La Kind.
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
All right, that motion passes seven to zero.
Okay.
Now, are you saying that you're going to do the motion for the next one? Yeah, I should leave. Just making sure.
Just, just.
Yes.
Yep, okay. All right.
Okay, so we're just making all of the motions at one time, correct?
Yep.
Yep. All right.
So I'll make a, a motion to go into executive session pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two sub four sub B for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions relating to notice of partial dismissal and ethics complaint from the Independent Ethics Commission.
Second.
Our motion is second, Ms. Erickson.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes six, zero.
Okay, we're back from executive session. We had two items on there, one we're going to talk about tonight, and involved the, the mayor, and he was absent from executive session. And I'd like to turn it over to our town attorney, Mr. Cole, to explain the details of where we were at, and then we'll have discussion.
Mr. Mayor, council, yeah, just, just restating, the executive session that was convened under eleven B, the Mayor Pro, Mayor La Kind excused himself before we got into that executive session, so he didn't participate in that session. And also, I would note that in neither executive sessions were any decisions made by the town council. From, from the executive session, though, and moving to agenda item twelve A, you have before you a resolution captioned, a resolution concerning case number twenty-three dash seventeen before the Colorado Independent Ethics Commission. And this is for your consideration and discussion. The, the resolution notes in the recital paragraphs that a complaint was filed with the independent Colorado Independent Ethics Commission in that the, the complaint contained numerous allegations that really called into question actions by various town personnel. The, the complaint, the vast majority of the complaint was dismissed by the Independence Ethics Commission, and I would just note that under its rules, it's only able to dismiss complaints without a hearing when those complaints are frivolous, so although it didn't say that the complaint was substantially frivolous for most of its allegations, I think that is the effect of that ruling. It, the, the commission also, though, directed a response be filed on two allegations in the complaint. Those allegations were that the mayor improperly attempted to influence town council members in February, March, and April on a matter which he had a personal private interest. And then also allegations relating to the mayor's possible conflict of interest at the April eleventh two thousand twenty-three meeting of the, of the Monument Town Council. I believe those both refer to the consideration and ultimate determination by the council to approve the payment of a Sherman and Howard legal invoice for, for work that was, was found by the council based on, on my recommendation that it found by the council to have been for work that benefited the town. And then the resolution goes on to note that a- and again, this is for your discussion, and you may or may not agree with what I have written here. But the resolution goes on to, to find that or state that the complaint is an ongoing effort to harass and embarrass the town council, the town and its officials, and detracts from providing services to. the town and its officials and detracts from providing services to the public. And that you believe there is no merit to the allegations that there was an attempt to influence the town council. The resolution also notes that under the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act, when there's matters of liability that involve tort claims, that the town has an obligation to defend its personnel, its elected officials, its appointed officials, its employees. That the town has a, has an obligation to defend them and that the state legislature has found that that's important because otherwise there's excessive financial burdens on, on the taxpayers and that defending your personnel is necessary in order to have people willing to take elected office, appointed office or employment with the town. And that, then following that the proposed resolution indicates that the council wishes to extend those same concepts to a response on this ethics matter. And then in the substantive portions of the resolution, it indicates that the council would be approving the expenditure of town funds to pay for a response to the complaint. And that the the council would direct the town attorney and the staff to, as assisted by town staff to file the, file the response so long as the mayor agrees that this doesn't create a conflict of interest between the town's interests and his interests as, as mayor. And then the fourth section just goes on to elaborate on a council finding that the interests of the mayor in this matter and the interests of the town are aligned and and that it's appropriate to utilize the same council as long as both parties sign an appropriate disclosure and, or consent to, to waiver of any conflict of interest. I give this to you for consideration and would be happy to answer any questions, make any modifications, nor would it hurt my feelings if you don't like this and choose to take other action.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Cole is when does a response have to be submitted by, no later than?
I believe I believe the date is September twenty-first.
Okay, I'm just asking because I want the not only the council to know, but the town to know as well. So that's why.
Yes, yes, I'll have to, I'll have to confirm that, but I, I believe it's September twenty-first.
Couple of questions, I'm glad you, you put in here not just the fact that this is a, essentially a harassment campaign, but the fact that we're using taxpayer money to continue to defend against I think you, you use the word frivolous. I have different words, but I'm going to try and be nice. I in your spare time and, and maybe this is a more of a Mike Foreman question. I'd like to know how much money the town has spent on this frivolous I really would like, rather use a different word, but this frivolous campaign against us in defending the town, its staff. It doesn't have to be right now, but I really would like to know, and I think the town deserves to know, how much money we're spending in defending something that is is, is not has no merit, thank you.
Yes.
So that's one. Two, I would like to just point out to everyone out there for the record. I think adopting this sets the tone to, like Mr. Cole said, anybody that wants to, in the future, either run for office, local office, which is hard enough, but also wants to be in wants to get into the, call it the business of town staff and in, in the business of you know, like we, we just appointed Tina Erickson, you know, employees who are working up the ranks. We're going to defend you to the very end and to the hilt because you're doing the town's business. You're helping this town and we will defend you against, especially against baseless accusations and innuendo that have no merit. So I'm fully in favor and I will pause here.
Do you have any other questions?
Oh, I just want to echo what Councilman Marco said, but also what I find yeah, I'll say appalling is the fact that some individuals that did not get reelected have now started or continue on to make accusations or allegations about things or the conduct of the board which calls into our integrity as a team representing the town and our intelligence. How six individuals decided on taking some action into, you know, we, independent minds that all see the same thing. We support one another and we are here to represent the town in the best interest of the residents, not only of Monument, but the surrounding areas too. And this is I'm up for it, I'm not exhausted, I mean, I'm tired of hearing the allegations, but I'm not I'm not exhausted and they can keep coming at us all day long, but also know that this will not take our, our, our eye off the ball of what the town needs. And that we're still going to conduct business as we, as we see what needs to be addressed, what needs to be looked at and to bring the town into the future or for future, future needs. So I ask, I asked the other, the other council members not to be discouraged, but be invigorated by this. And I yeah, I, I, I think it's I, I think it's a shame that, that these individuals keep trying to find another avenue to bring something up that has already been, like you said, ninety percent dismissed and now something frivolous that just some folks just can't let go for some reason or another. So I, I am all, I am all for voting for this tonight. I am all for supporting this. And, and I encourage any other input or feedback, positive or negative, that we need to discuss to have, to, to, to vote on this tonight, this resolution.
Mr. Romanella, you have something to say?
Oh, I would just like to say that I, just speaking for myself as a councilman, there is, there was absolutely no influence or coercion on me at all in any way, manner or form regarding this. And I was as far as the April eleventh meeting goes, I cannot see anything that was improper about it at all. And that's my only statement.
Thank you.
Yeah. Chronic?
Thank you. I, I kind of, I'm, I'm in concert with everybody here and I think the important thing is that we are a group of people, individuals who come from different backgrounds, different mindsets, and still we came to the same conclusion and we're supporting this resolution as a result of that because we were not coerced and there was no, nothing inappropriate that happened here. And it just to me, it's just, it's very sad that we're still here. I would love to have the head of this snake cut off at some point and there's any way to do it, this might be it, that would be lovely. But I'm all for whatever it takes to, to get this over, done, finished. Thank you.
Well, did you have anything, Ms. Abbott? I, I would like to just kind of in rap, wrapping this together. We determined that all personal expenses off of the attorney bill that we agreed to, to pay, all the personal expenses were removed. All of the expenses that had to do with town issues remained. We made that determination unanimously knowing that there would probably be some other attacks coming, but that was the right thing to do because it was appropriate and it was justified and it was recommended by our town attorney. We unanimously voted without coercion. There's, everybody has been said here has independent minds and I certainly wasn't coerced in any way. That was the appropriate thing to do and that's why I'm assuming everybody here voted that way. This this complaint had lots of other items in it that had nothing to do with Mayor Lakine. And yet they were included and everything has been dismissed. So what we're really down to right now, the whole entire complaint is whether or not that we were coerced, which is an attack on our integrity if we were coerced. So it isn't, it comes down to whether or not we were coerced and whether or not there's a conflict of interest. And the conflict of interest would be as if we paid personal attorney expenses, which we did not. So I think that this resolution is appropriate and I, I would be in support of it.
Is this, this is a public, do, do we need to do a public? Is, oh, it's not, it's just, okay.
No.
Well, I'll make a motion if there's.
If anybody's got anything left, otherwise.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Blases. I'm just a bet. I make a motion to adopt Resolution number sixty dash twenty twenty-three of Resolution concerning case number twenty-three dash seventeen before the Colorado Independent Ethics Commission.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second, Ms. Erickson?
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We are, we are adjourned.